First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilors. Next, order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remark to three minutes. Also, as a reminder, I think it helps IT if we leave our microphones turned on at all times, so if you'd please do that, I think it helps with the sound. And remember to speak up loudly and clearly so those watching from home or online can hear what we have to say. City Council pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body, restricting others from their viewpoints and finding solutions for the betterment of the city. With that, I will open it up for citizen comments, if there are any. Johanna, please introduce yourself for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, I'm Johanna Bidescombe Moussad hyphen Frank. Frank was my father's name. Bidescombe was my father's last name. Okay, I have a brother. His name is John Bidescombe, adopted Ier. I was adopted too, Jeanette wasn't. Okay, I'm Ornery, okay? Well, this guy, I was a queen cheerleader. You know, they used to flip me. I wasn't very heavy, and he said I was too thin, and he said, "You have to choose me or your brother." Okay, guess what? I threw him a birthday party. Well, I was with my brother going to Seattle Water Motorcycle. Okay, and I am having a torque with the city and Medical for Life, okay? And I'm gonna have, uh, get rehabilitated. So here's the song for my brother, okay? And there's a section, "Wherever you go, my heart will go." I would've had some Monica player, but he wanted to smoke pot in Lewiston, Idaho. So anyway, do you think he's with the one that will go to Rainbow Gathering? We don't need that. Okay? And I have to do it by myself, so I want everybody to stand and help me. It's a green beret, I'll call it fallen one. Anybody?
Johanna, Johanna, Johanna.
Soldier boy, oh, my little soldier boy. I'll be true to you. You were my first love, and you'll be my last love. And I can't do it, but God gave me this song. I've been in many bands, and I started singing it in the morning of John, who was a fallen beret on his six years of being dead. And I lost my husband that year, too. I've been married three times. People think, "Oh, I'm so naughty." I've lost two Catholic husbands, got married in the church. And in 1988, when this song came out, I had to leave the kid's father because I have a handicapped daughter. And I fought the school history and lost. They wanted her to stay in a wheelchair. James Grove paid $2,000. He said, "I don't know what to do." I moved to Spirit Lake, Idaho, leaving my son with Jollymore to raise because they wouldn't let me put him in juvie. And on the day of the pill, Nina was in the paper saying I did not like Parks and School District. And we were brown, and they treated us like brown. And Rod Reekins is going to be Portland.
Thank you, Johanna. Are there any other citizen comments tonight? I have one that was submitted that I'm going to read. This is from Robert L. Bob Clark. Lives on Cedar Avenue here in Lewiston. He's elderly, he and his wife, and they'd intended to be here tonight, and something came up. Robert Clark. And this is with regards to the proposed roundabout at 10th and Burl. I'm sorry, cannot get to the council meeting tonight. I have another meeting I cannot miss. I'm very much opposed to this roundabout. There are four properties involved, along with power poles, city-installed sidewalks on the north side of the street for the kids to walk on, sewer and water lines and gas lines in the street, all to be moved. This project will cost around half a million tax dollars, my guess, to complete. I think it would be much better to use this grant money to repair and rebuild the driving, excuse me, the, can't read that word, but it's the water reservoir.
Drinking.
At 31st and 16th Avenue and help out the people who lost so much in the flood. Crossing guards at 10th and Burl would cost $40 or $50 a day for eight and a half months to get the kids safely across 10th Street. I think the school system could help with this cost. Again, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, cannot attend the city council meeting tonight. There are other meetings I'd like to, there are other things I'd like to say. Respectfully, R. L. Bob Clark. After another comments, then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda are considered retained by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless the councilor shall request, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under items moved from the consent agenda. Councilors. Mayor?
Counselor Towesley?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Towesley, seconded by Counselor Schroeder to approve the consent agenda. Is there discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Gravenbrock?
Council President Lidkey?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, councilors. Next up on our active agenda, item A, Clearwater Financial LLC engagement agreement. Considering approval of the Clearwater Financial Agreement, this is an action item, and we have with us tonight Director Barker from Parks and Rec Department. Director Barker, please introduce yourself. For the record, the floor is yours. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for putting this on the agenda for tonight. Tim Barker, Parks and Rec Director for the City of Lewiston. I am here first for the votes related to Clearwater Financial's engagement agreement related to bond services performed for Community Park, and I stand for any questions that you might have related to the initial agreement. And then after we go through this agenda item, then we'll talk more specifically about the engagement process.
Thank you, Director Barker. Counselor, are there any questions? Counselors, Counselor Schroeder?
I make a motion to approve the engagement agreement between the City of Lewiston and Clearwater Financial LLC. Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Forsman to approve the engagement agreement between the City of Lewiston and Clearwater Financial LLC. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Gravenbrock?
Council President Lidkey?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Nay.
Motion passes. Thank you, councilors. Next up, item V, addendum number one to the agreement with Clearwater Financial related to public engagement. Considering approval of an addendum number one to the Clearwater Financial Agreement, this is an action item. Again, we have Director Barker with us here from Parks and Rec Department. Director, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This addendum is, hopefully, the process didn't confuse anybody that we had an agreement and then a separate addendum. This is pretty standard when we have a consultant that comes in with a standardized agreement and then additional services that could be added to their original agreement. So that's what this process is covering, is this is for additional services related to the public engagement and education within the community, which is going to be a vital part of what we're looking at for a bond election this next November, is to be able to get out and engage with the public, surveying, interactions, finding out where we sit as far as support for this bond that we're going to be looking at moving forward. So this is a very vital portion of this process as well, as we obviously identified through the approval of the master plan this last fall that you all approved, thankfully. I appreciate what you had done to support that, but moving forward, obviously, we want to move this process so we don't have that sitting on a shelf and can complete these projects. With me tonight, if there are any questions, I have Cameron Ariel and Jace Perry with Clearwater Financial, but otherwise, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Director. Counselors? Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Yeah, so Director, I was trying to find it in, I had a little bit of a hard time with my software, but so, like, for 2023, this fiscal year, what would the cost be?
Director?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Spicklemeyer. The cost for this addendum would be $36,000.
Counselors, further discussion? Counselor Schroeder?
I'd like to make a motion.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve addendum number one to the engagement agreement between the City of Lewiston and Clearwater Financial LLC. Is there further discussion?
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With this, the problem I have with it is I personally don't feel that we have the public support on it. And to me, that it needs to go to the public, I know this is preparing to basically advertise it and promote the product, but $36,000 is a lot of money to a lot of people. And to me, spending any more money until we have the public vote to move forward is a possibility of wasted money. And the time, the time spent by city employees, money spent, so it's hard for me to support it just because I don't think it has a strong future, if you will.
Thank you, Counselor. Other comments?
Mayor?
Counselor Lidkey?
I would have to agree with Counselor Spicklemeyer, not so much that I don't think this project should be talked about in the near future, but I do believe that I've made myself very clear that we have needs that need to be addressed first, and $36,000 is not a lot in the scheme of probably the city's bills, but it is something that we need to take a look at. And, you know, looking at our timeline, what can we do in-house to build the education that's needed for people to fully understand our plan while we also attack some other things that have come up? And I'm, you know, to no fault of Parks and Rec, but I do believe supersede spending additional funds on a project that whether or not we have the community support, I don't know that we have the measurement in place to feel confident voting for this, so I'm not going to support the motion.
Thank you, Counselor. Further comments?
Mayor?
Counselor Lidkey?
I would have to agree with Counselor Spicklemeyer, not so much that I don't think this project should be talked about in the near future, but I do believe that I've made myself very clear that we have needs that need to be addressed first, and $36,000 is not a lot in the scheme of probably the city's bills, but it is something that we need to take a look at. And, you know, looking at our timeline, what can we do in-house to build the education that's needed for people to fully understand our plan while we also attack some other things that have come up? And I'm, you know, to no fault of Parks and Rec, but I do believe supersede spending additional funds on a project that whether or not we have the community support, I don't know that we have the measurement in place to feel confident voting for this, so I'm not going to support the motion.
Thank you, Counselor. Further comments? Clerk Gravenbrock?
Council President Lidkey?
Nay.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Nay.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Nay.
Three to three.
Three to three. Does the mayor vote on this one? Counsel? Okay, mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Next up, our active agenda, item C, Resolution 2023-3, Title VI, Limited English Proficiency Plan. We have our HR Director, Nikki Provence, with us here tonight. Nikki, if you'd please introduce yourself for the record and remember to speak up clearly and loudly so folks listening at home can hear what you have to say. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Sure. Nikki Provence, HR Director for the City of Lewiston. I see that an agenda item history sheet wasn't included, so I'll give a brief about what this is. This is a updated Title VI in Limited English Proficiency Plan. We currently have one that was last updated in 2009. The significance of this is it is a requirement, not only is it a good thing to do, but it's a requirement by the federal government for any entities that receive funds or any sub-receipients that receive federal funds. And so this just puts in place our Title VI process of trying to keep the city out of any kind of discriminatory situations and have a process for complaints should an individual feel that they have been discriminated in some sort of way. Limited English proficiency is a component of the Title VI plan. I know it seems a little bit interesting in the fact that we have one because we don't have a quite diverse community, but the limited English proficiency did not include updated census numbers, so this plan updates our census numbers to 2021. And it turns out we do have some very limited English-speaking individuals who reside in our city, so that's important to know. And this just allows us to be able to provide services to those individuals should they need city services, parks and recreation, pay their utility bill. How can we assist them when they speak such limited English? And we have plans in place to be able to do that.
Thank you, Director. Counselors, do you have questions? For Director Provence?
I just want to make a comment.
Counselor Towesley?
Thank you for bringing this up. I think it's important to note that all people who have limited English proficiency aren't necessarily using English as a second language. And that's an important thing. It isn't just those people who aren't, who aren't using English as a first language. There are people who struggle with the use of their native language as well, and this protects them as well, so.
Yeah, it allows us to have our employees trained to be able to understand when an individual comes with limited English, how they should react, phone number they can call for assistance, translation of documents should we need it, so it kind of puts that in place.
Counselor Schroeder?
Thank you. See, I was waiting for you guys, and you didn't do it. I'm not going to wait anymore. Okay. A motion to approve Resolution 2023-10.
Second.
Is that the right one? No, it isn't. I apologize. Motion to approve Resolution 2023-3.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Forsman to approve Resolution 2023-3. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Gravenbrock?
Council President Lidkey?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, councilors. Next up, under the active agenda, item D, Resolution 2023-10, considering approval of the Downtown Lewiston Infrastructure Scoping Study drafted by Horrocks. This is an action item. With us, we have Director, Public Works Director, Dustin Johnson. Director, please introduce yourself for the record and remember to speak up clearly and loudly into the microphone. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. Here for you tonight is, as the mayor introduced, Resolution 23-10. You may remember there was a scoping study for the downtown. This was actually started by the previous council. I think this was actually one of your first action items, probably about a year ago in January, approving the contract for the scoping study. So generally, in terms of what this is, early on in, would be 2022, or I guess late in 2021, the city put priority on addressing some of the downtown water upgrades that were necessary. And so there was the ARPA funds that were allocated for, you know, the downtown water improvements, and we'll talk a little bit more detail on that later in the agenda tonight. But as we were discussing and peeling away into the details of those improvements, recognizing anytime you get into this dense urban core of what is considered downtown, what is called the scope tends to get a little complicated with other utilities such as stormwater, sanitary sewer, the water itself, transportation, sidewalk vaults, property boundaries that are a little bit gray in some general areas. And so, you know, as an urban core that's 120-plus years old, a lot of, lot of studies, a lot of plaques, a lot of information to digest. And so what we decided to do early on in the process was to hire an engineer to go through step by step and analyze the process and try and figure out, one, what is the cost, overall cost expected? Two, what would be some potential phases that this could be undertook? And generally, where could some, you know, as we want to be efficient, as I've explained to the downtown property owners, what, the last thing you want to do is come in here and wreck Main Street four consecutive seasons just to fix the stormwater, then water, and then the sewer, and then pave it. That's not good for business or anybody. So that's the long, the short of what was in this scoping study. We had a steering committee, we had a couple meetings, we had a work session. What tonight is, is just basically adopting this completed study by resolution. So now, this doesn't bind you to any future budgets or any projects that are identified in this, but generally says, the city agrees to the findings within the scoping study, henceforth, staff or anybody else can use this document for grants or future budget presentations or anything like that. Private entities could use this and say, "Hey, we want to redevelop this block. What do you got?" We could give them this information of this is the direction the city wants to go. So this is, this does not bind you to anything, but it kind of formalizes the process of just accepting the findings of the scoping study. So that's generally the summary of what is here for you tonight. I stand for questions.
Thank you, Director. Counselors? Counselor Forsman?
So if we didn't accept this study, I mean, how much was the cost of putting this study together?
I can't remember. We've already paid for it.
Yeah.
I can't, I think it was right around $100,000, but 70, I'm north of 50, south of 100, we'll say that.
Okay.
And that has already been paid for, and so to vote no for the resolution, it's still done.
Right.
It's still on my shelf. I would still use it the same, but if, if there were grants available, I would include the resolution and say, "Hey, look, this, we take this study seriously," so it kind of formalizes it more, but yeah, voting no doesn't really do anything one way or the other, other than I appreciate to have the formal, you know, that the council agrees to the findings.
Okay. Second follow-up, please.
Counselor?
So you're saying, though, anything on this, if we're kind of not liking maybe the layout of some of these proposals or plans, that we don't have to follow that, it would, we could change the way these are lined out?
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's, that's the kind of the trigger, and that's as far as we've gotten. It's nothing in here is true, I shouldn't say it's not true engineering, it's preliminary engineering. So the next step would be to, you know, do a full survey and start defining it, you know, into what we call like a 20% design, so that is when you start really getting pen to paper. And everything that's in this plan is generally taken from other plans, and so that was the goal. We weren't trying to reinvent the wheel, which is why we had a steering committee, and we did do workshops, because in speaking with the downtown property owners and some members of the council was, we've talked this to death. There's not much more to rehash, so we were just trying to compile all the information. So I would, I would go as to say probably 99% of what is in the study is taken from, you know, the wastewater master plan from 2018, the water plan, and some pedestrian studies. BDL, Beautiful Downtown Lewiston, did a master plan, a downtown master plan in 2019, I think, so just taking, compiling all that into, into the first step in getting actual engineering documents put together for it.
Okay.
Which would be the next step.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that, especially those listening, because sometimes they'll see a layout and they'll think that's kind of what we're going with, but it's not that we're following that exact plan or.
Yeah, yeah. At some point, for like cost estimates, we have to commit to something.
Yeah.
And, and we're not, we're not, you know, like I said, this doesn't bind anybody to anything, other than that's the direction that we have heard, and we've put cost estimates to it, we've broken it out into phases. If for whatever reason, two years from now, you know, $500 million comes out of the sky and we're going to build it, and they say we want two-way traffic or something that doesn't match this plan, then we pursue that route.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor? Counselor Towesley?
Thank you. Director Johnson, were there any things that were in this report? It was quite extensive. I thoroughly night reading. It's, was there anything in this report that you and your staff felt that you'd do differently or that you, that you have issues with, or are you 100% on board with this?
I think the devil's in the details. I mean.
Sure.
A lot of what's in it is below grade, which nobody cares about. There's alternative things, I should, I care a lot about it, but, you know, when you talk about which way do you want the sewer to flow? Do you want it to go this way or that way? I don't think people really care, as long as it's away from their house. So we've got some plans, we're working with some property owners downtown to work on some bypass to get it to different directions that would open up, you know, flow downtown. It's kind of at capacity, so if we can pull some of the flow and get it to go somewhere else, which is, which is in here, working on details like that, I think where you get above grade and you start talking, what do you want Main Street and D to look like? How do you want it to function? Is it truly a bypass road, which I would, I mean, me personally feels that it's not. It is, it is a destination that isn't, you know, that's where business is, you know, if you want to get through, we have a bypass. And so from, from my perspective, I think where it gets more in the weeds is the, is the transportation component. You have the Twin City Foods, you've got, is it two-way traffic? Is it one-way traffic? How does the bypass interact to it? How do you get off the bridge? How do you get out of town? Parking, sidewalk vaults, all of, that is the part where we really start making sausage because it gets really complicated and everybody's got an opinion.
Thank you.
Counselor Lidkey?
Director Johnson, when you mentioned using this for grants, I see the total project cost was developed in 2022, but a contingency of 20% is included, equalling about 4.6 million, as well as design, construction, management, and inspection. So is this going to affect writing any grants moving forward? Are we going to need to make an adjustment related to current project costs or?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, this, this would be a very specific type of grant that we would be going after, unless you break it down into phases. And so you're looking at, you know, there's, the next page after the big eye-popping $35 million is how we would phase it. Phase one is also a very big component of 41% of that, so I, the only way that you're really going to get a massive grant of that nature would be probably something on a federal level, which would be like a RACE grant, that would take many, many years. That's what the county used to secure Cherry Lane Bridge, and they invested many, many, many years to pursue that. I don't even know if that would be available for something like this, but I think what you would probably want to use this for is to focus on bite-sized B. many years to pursue that. I don't even know if that would be available for something like this. But I think what you would probably want to use this for is to focus on bite-sized bases, utilizing the downtown URA, utilizing, you know, some commerce grants, some DEQ stormwater grants, and trying to compile that in. And even then, you know, you're taking that phase by phase. Like I said, the RACE federal level is the only way that you're going to get this thing done in one massive project.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Thank you, Mayor. Director, so I think I already answered my own question, but the project we're going to talk about a little later, the downtown transmission line, that's north of this scope, correct?
This, that would be east of here. So the primary components, Jefferson to Ninth, so right there at Wells Fargo, that would terminate, that would be going east of there. And then Schedule B is down by, kind of swallowed in behind Locomotive Park.
So it's kind of one of the phases, but this scope would cover the other phases?
Yeah. That's a good question. I'm not sure if that, this water main was, because they were kind of going concurrently, if that million-dollar water main project was lumped into this, I'm not sure. It may be a part of that, too. I didn't even think about that.
Counselors. Counselor Schroeder.
I'll make a motion. Get the right one this time. Resolution 2023-10, right? Okay. I move to approve Resolution 2023-10.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Towesley to approve Resolution 2023-10. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Ravengroft.
Council President Lidkey.
Aye.
Counselor Towesley.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, councilors. Thank you, Director. Next up, we have Item D, Resolution 2023-11, considering the Federal Transit Administration Fiscal year 2023 certifications and assurances. This is an action item. And we have Suzanne Senior, Transit Manager, with us here tonight. Suzanne, welcome. And please remember to speak up loudly and clearly, so those at home especially can hear what you have to say. The floor is yours. Thank you.
I'm Suzanne Senior, and I'm the Transit Manager. And I'm coming before you, as Transit does annually, to approve the resolution for the certifications and assurances from the FTA. That's our agreement with the FTA that allows us to be funded every year. That represents 655,000 plus for our budget for this year. By the time the FTA announces its, the allocations we get, we were, it announced it in January, then the certifications and assurances follow. You can see in your packet the 21 areas that the FTA covers in the certifications and assurances, and we have approved these annually every year since 2009. So I'm coming before you to approve the resolution to sign the certs and assurances, or certifications and assurances.
Thank you, Suzanne. Councilors, do you have questions? Counselor Schroeder.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-11.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Lidkey to approve Resolution 2023-11. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Ravengroft.
Council President Lidkey.
Aye.
Counselor Towesley.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, councilors. Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you. I also have the next item. And I'm coming before you to ask to have you sign an amendment to a contract with ITD, FTA, on the funding agreement for our two fixed route buses. We ordered them in 2021, and by the time we received the buses and were able to fix some, a few things, get them into service, and then put together the reimbursement packet, the contract had expired. So I'm just asking for an amendment for the contract to be extended so that we may be reimbursed the $220,000 from ITD/FTA.
Thank you, Suzanne. And Suzanne, I'd like to introduce the Item 2, if I may.
Sorry.
Please. No, you're great.
I jumped the gun.
Item F, Amendment to Federal Transit Administration FTA Agreement, Considering Approval of an Amendment to Extend the Date of the Federal Transit Administration's FTA I339, my eyes are going out, I mean, Funding Agreement Number C2076LT for $200,000 through September 30, 2023. Again, thank you, Director. Suzanne. Councilors, any questions? Counselor Schroeder.
I'll make a motion to approve amendment to the FTA 5339 Small Urban Funding Agreement, C2076LT, between the City of Lewiston and Idaho Transportation Department.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Kleberg to approve Amendment One to the FTA 5339 Small Urban Funding Agreement Number C2076LT between the City of Lewiston and Idaho Transportation Department. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Ravengroft.
Council President Lidkey.
Aye.
Counselor Towesley.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, councilors. Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Councilors, next up, under the active agenda, we have Item G, IFB-23-004 Downtown Transmission Main Replacement, Considering Approval of a Bid Award for the Downtown Transmission Main Replacement Project to Libreria Incorporated in the amount of $1,703,350. Director Johnson is here to present this item. Director, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. In between items, Plan Director Groh pointed out that this, it was, a portion of this was included in the master plan study that we, or the scoping study that we just discussed. So we're already picking through that $35 million. So in front of you tonight is, as I previously laid out, the discussion of the water main, the downtown water main improvements. This is the first phase. We've been, we had a large contract with engineering, engineering firm to complete all of the design. And so this is just the first phase, getting kicked out, ready for construction. So this was, this will be funded with ARPA funds. So those need to be, that was a direct allocation from the Fed. So this needs to be spent, I believe, by 2026. In front of you tonight, for your consideration, is the first portion, as I said earlier, the water line from Ninth to Jefferson is the Schedule A, and then Eighteenth to US 12. It's that Main Street that kind of doglegs behind Locomotive Park in there. And then it ties into where the main was extended with that intersection improvements previously a couple summers ago. The bid was $1.7 million, which was less than engineers' estimate. So that was a surprise to us, that we did, we bargained, still do, come up in construction that countered what you may hear from me later. The only, only thing I would add on this is some questions arose. Obviously, we had a little bit of an issue with our reservoir on January 18th. And so the question was, should we pull this? Should we pull the funding for this water main and funnel that money still up to any improvements that may be necessary in those, into the reservoir? And my advice to you would be to not do that, in that there is still probably roughly $2 to $3 million remaining in the ARPA allocations. That reservoir is part of that system, that was part of that resolution, that water system, as I previously said. We've got to connect the high reservoir to the downtown. And so we still have to, we don't have to change anything in our plans other than we can complete the design and funnel the money, if necessary, to the high reservoir. And then there's reserve money, and then we're still in conversation with the states and anybody who listen about the condition that we're in, and we're learning more each day. So with that being said, I am comfortable saying that this will not hinder, spending this $1.7 million will not hinder our ability financially to address any reservoir deficiencies that we come across over the next couple weeks. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Director. Councilors. Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Mr. Mayor, Director, so looking at those bids you had, they said there was five bid packages, and the lowest bid was 18%, $376,000 under the estimated cost. So of the other five, was there a huge gap between number two and number one?
It was, it was a pretty typical spread. It was a little bit surprising that the spread was lower. I mean, usually the joke is you never want the engineer to get the job, and we didn't. So that was good. But the spread was incrementally kind of what you would typically see in a project that's bid like this.
And there isn't really a concern in your department as to something coming across that much lower?
No. I'm not, this is a firm that is not local, that I am not familiar with. I know they do a lot of work in Idaho. They're at or after them. So we are familiar with them, but, you know, much like any other projects, it's an open bid. So anybody who bids on it and is a low bidder, that we're obligated to award. And there's no red flags that we know of with this particular company.
Thank you.
Mayor, comment?
Counselor Forsman.
Appreciate, one, that you put the local funds in the bid in there. So whoever did that, that was helpful. As well as already answering the question about the reservoir, because that was in my mind. So you jumped ahead on that. So that's awesome, and appreciate the continued effort that you have put, your team has put with this water reservoir issue, and as well as just trying to get our city on track.
Thank you, Counselor. Other comments, councilors? Okay, entertain a motion. Counselor Schroeder.
I move, excuse me if I can speak, I move to award IFB-23-004 to Libreria Inc. and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between the City of Lewiston and Libreria Inc.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Forsman to award IFB-23-River Fort to Libreria Incorporated and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between the City of Lewiston and Libreria Incorporated. Is there further discussion? Clerk Ravengroft.
Council President Lidkey.
Aye.
Counselor Towesley.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleberg.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, councilors. And Director, next up, we have Item H, RFP-23-007, Burl Avenue and 10th Street Mini Roundabout, Considering Approval of the Bid for the Burl Avenue and 10th Street Mini Roundabout to Western Construction Incorporated in the amount of $328,418. This is an action item. Director, welcome again. Please speak up clearly and loudly. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director, here to talk about the 10th Street and Burl Mini Roundabout. There has been quite a few questions from the public and from the council about this project. So I put together a short little presentation here to kind of give you some visuals of what it is and what it isn't. I'll do my best to kind of give you kind of the high level of what we're here to discuss specifically tonight. Then I'll go a little bit into the history of the project and why it was designed the way it was designed. And then I'll finally get into kind of the process of how we got to here today, just to hopefully clarify any questions. So as the title says, this is a mini roundabout recommendation for award, typical public, City Lewiston Public Works project. It was designed and then went out to bid. We received competitive bids. But this was one where the engineer was the low bidder. So the engineer's estimate was $224,000 and change. The low bid was $328,000 and change. In the narrative was provided a little bit why we thought it came in high. Yes, it was 46% more than engineer's estimate. I temper what I say, but this is a small type of public works project. And so you're going to see some big swings. When you have large construction companies, they have to mobilize, bringing their equipment off other jobs or buy equipment or whatever they got to do. And so to see a swing this large percentage-wise isn't surprising when we're talking the low $100,000 amount. So I recognize $328,000 is a lot of money to all of us, but when we're building, you know, larger projects, it tends to swing that dramatically. So to get in a little bit more onto detail of what it is. So this project is on 10th and Burl. It kind of located halfway between Centennial Elementary and the Boys and Girls Club. I just kind of put a happy sun there to denote where the, that is not to scale. That is not the true engineering drawing there. It is, you know, it is a location that historically, I believe the X, when the last time we looked at the numbers, there was 14 crashes when they evaluated it, probably a couple years ago. I don't know if there's more since then. Typically, those were cars that pulled out and were going either north-south and were hit by Burl traffic. The recommendation at the time was to go with a mini roundabout. They considered a, just converting it to a four-way stop, and the issue was it congested the traffic. It still is a possibility, but you're going to lose a lot of functionality out of that intersection by putting it a full four-way stop, just because the congestion typically happens when there's either events at Centennial or the Boys and Girls Club. You know, right now, it's not congested. And so if you put the four-way stop, you're going to start getting people who are going to roll through it or not, you know, abide by that four-way stop. So it was recommended as a potential short-term solution until a roundabout was devised. But as you may know, it never was put in as a four-way intersection. That's just the typical section of a roundabout or the mini roundabout. And so this goes back through the planning process. It was identified as, between the functionality and the accident data, and then the high pedestrian volume, and then based off of travel speeds, that this would be an ideal candidate for a mini roundabout. Full disclosure, I am an engineer. I am indifferent to roundabouts. I do not want to force roundabouts down anybody's throat. I'm just saying that as a tool that is used sometimes for particular intersections. I will go to the next. So this is typically, what you want is to, for a mini roundabout like this, you want to prevent people who want to take a left. And so you can see, as you approach that roundabout, the, I guess I call them the pork chop, but the little, the little, oops, sorry, giving you dizzy. So this little area right here forces the traffic to go into the roundabout to the right and then go around instead of trying to jump across that. And with that, so here's the striping pattern. So you're pulling pedestrian traffic, and obviously pedestrian traffic is a large consideration with this project. So you're pulling pedestrians, so here's the existing sidewalk, you're pulling the pedestrians back away from the intersection so they're not mingling with traffic going in a circular pattern. So the idea is that as the pedestrians are crossing here, they will only be passed, or going across one conflict point at a time. So as a vehicle may enter the, in the circle here, they will be out of the roundabout, able to see directionally any pedestrians in that. Then you have a pedestrian refuge here to look for traffic coming in there. So that is basically the functionality of what is a mini roundabout. I will say, this cost is over budget, but in the whole big picture of it, it does not require additional right-of-way. It does not require significant utility relocations. It is not a concrete roundabout. It is a small mini roundabout that will fit into the existing right-of-way. Again, kind of going back to the high level of why was it selected, one was the pedestrian activity. The diagram off to the left, I think I may have sent some of this information to some interested citizens and the city council or some councilors, as well as the school board had some questions about it. So essentially, it slows traffic down. It doesn't stop them unless there's pedestrians or somebody already in the roundabout. So the travel speeds will slow down, and you have, you minimize the conflict points with pedestrians, as you see on the drawing on the left there. Traffic turning left, it is one of the bigger safety concerns as traffic engineers. As you're turning left, you're looking for vehicle traffic coming this way. You cut across the traffic, and now you have a conflict point at multiple times with pedestrians crossing that lane. So this type of roundabout would mitigate that. Nothing is fail-safe. My, you know, I'm not going to tell you that nothing could ever happen at this roundabout, but the traffic data demonstrates over and over again that the accidents are fewer and those accidents that do and those accidents that do occur are less severe than, than a four-way intersection. So now to dive in a little bit just real quick on the process. So as I said, this, this project was identified long before I got here. So this has been in the works for a while, and had gone back and forth during the CIP, you know, the master plan, transportation master plan process, as well as the capital improvement plan process. And so, yeah, this one didn't come quite, quite as clear as I wanted it. Basically to show you, this is the number three project identified in the transportation master plan, CIP. The top two are Brighton Phase One, Brighton Phase Two, and then this. If I could, if I was smart enough to blow it up, you would see traditionally the projects that are identified in here, 21st Street, Fane, Main Street, those are multimillion-dollar projects. And so here's a mini roundabout that is at the top three, that is under half a million dollars. And so that was generally thought of as the staff, that this seems to be one that, you know, you're going to spend under half a million dollars, and you're mitigate your top, one of your top three transportation projects that's identified by your CIP. And so that, that has been vetted through previously by previous councils, previous public works directors, and that's how we got to where we are today. So to close, as I said, I like to tell people, I don't want to build a project you don't want. So if the public says they don't want this project, and the council does not want this project, I'm not going to lose any sleep tonight. I am, however, going to ask you, we've identified a project in the, the top three of the CIP, and we're not going to proceed with awarding the contract, which is, which is why we're here, but I need clear direction as to what should we do? Do we, we scrap the project? Do we put the four-way stop up there and see what happens? Do we leave it as it is, knowing that it continues to be identified as a potential project? So I, I guess I've laid out how I view the project and our recommendations, and I'm here for questions.
Well, just a quick comment. Director, if you don't mind me saying so, for those of us that remember the Village People and Y MCA, if you weren't watching the director describe this project, I can tell you that he resembled that dance quite a bit with your movements and everything. I wasn't quite sure what.
I got the C down real easy right there.
Your animation was very good. So you are, you are more than an engineer. You have hidden talents.
Don't know what to do with my hands.
Counselor? Counselor Schroeder?
Thank you. I really appreciate having that diagram, because the comments that were made, yes, thank you. The comments that were made against it, you know, without seeing this, I probably might hesitate myself, but where you're moving the children, pedestrians, or any pedestrian, away from that center, I think that's, I, I'm in total support of it.
Yeah, the, one thing I did forget to include is, is the, the mini roundabouts, and I know, you know, the, the center is mountable. I know anybody who pulls a trailer or has big trucks despises them. That's why I'm always careful to make sure that the centers are mountable, so even if you don't quite clear it, your, your trailer is just going to roll over it. But as, from a pedestrian standpoint, the, the, the small, single-lane roundabouts are pretty straightforward. It's when you have those multi-lane roundabouts, and so you have, I, I always talk of conflict points. And so if you have, you know, you have a, again, sorry with the hands, that you have the, you have channelized traffic going through one side, and so that always create, that just creates another conflict point. And, and these are, you don't get any fewer conflict points with an intersection design than this.
Thank you.
Counselor Towsley?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Dustin. Was there any consideration made to having a lighting system set up, so that, kind of like what you have down on Snake River now? When someone is at the bottom of that hill, and their pedestrian hit a button, and it lights up so people know? And what, what kind of additional cost would it go for something like this? And I speak for this, I, I have a sister-in-law who spent six weeks in Harborview because she was hit, she was walking, she was a pedestrian hit by someone who didn't stop at a red light and just made a turn. And I'm, I'm very much into safety at, at zones like this.
Yeah, there was, and I don't know, again, this was before my time, but reviewing the notes for preparation for tonight, there was a consideration to, it wouldn't have been included with a roundabout. It would have been included either with exactly what's there now, or a four-way stop, or full signalized intersection, which it didn't warrant a full signalization. But there was some conversations, and, and it didn't, it, it wouldn't mitigate the traffic issue. It would only mitigate the, the pedestrian issue.
Right.
And I don't want to, it's probably comparable cost-wise of to what this is. Typical signal, a full-blown signal is, is north of a half a million dollars, depending on how complicated it gets. And the problems we've had, just like the one on Snake River, that one was on order during COVID for, I think it didn't get here for, we completed the project, and had to come back like six months later. So supply chain thing. So I don't know where those, it's been a, a strange last year as far as material prices. So I, I would say it would probably be somewhat comparable to, to the cost of this project, maybe a little bit more, but it still wouldn't address the, the, the traffic.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Forstman?
I drive by this intersection every day, so I am well aware of the congestion and pedestrians. For one, I'm terrified when kids are getting out of school and walking there, because you get people going back and forth, stopping, you have to make eye contact with the kids so that they know that you're there and watching them, as well as then you play the whole, no, you go, no, you go, no, you go. And so it's a very congested intersection. As far as what the citizen that had wrote about the power poles and the housing, how do you feel like that's going to affect that concern that he brought up?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, all of that should have been included in, in the, in the bid that was received. So I, I don't, I was not aware of any additional utility relocates or anything like that, and that, those are usually included in that. So I, I believe that number, I mean, there's engineering design and inspection and all those things that aren't included in that price, but the actual construction and, and that stuff would be included in that, that, that number.
Yeah, so it's not really going to, it's, it's not going to affect them, those that live on the, in that, those houses, basically.
No, not, not that I'm, I mean, impact them, I don't know. I mean, you, you, you know, you change anything in, in front of somebody's property, you know, and for me to say, to, to be, you know, to say, to minimize that, I, I don't, I don't know, because I don't live there.
Right.
But I would say, you know, it, it was included, that the design outlines everything that's within the right-of-way.
Well, I for one think we need to do something, obviously. I, it seems that four-way stop would cause maybe more of an opportunity for a pedestrian to get hit, because now you're having to look so many different ways and, and looking for cross-traffic. So I'm in favor of it, and I feel like it can alleviate a lot of that congestion that's happening right now, and hopefully the kids that are coming out of school can have more of a easy way of getting across the street. Do, are the flags a good thing, or have there been, what, what's going on with the flags? Because they know sometimes we have them downtown, and then they kind of went missing. So I don't know if the people are taking off of them, or?
Yeah, we have a couple of programs right now that we have. I don't know, the, the ones downtown predate me, so I don't know how those were established, but I think the mayor and I and a few other people have been working, I think it's Jennifer has the flags. So the, the flags are out there. Again, they're a, a tool in, in the, in the, in the tool shed that we can utilize. I don't like to consider, you know, one, you know, trying to say this, flags for everybody, that'll make you safe. And so, you know, there's particular areas where, you know, flags are appropriate and they would work. I don't know, you know, all the, I'm not intimately knowledgeable on how the pedestrian, you know, the kids going back and forth from, from the elementary to the Boys and Girls Club. I don't know, you know, I haven't studied the traffic, or the, you know, the pedestrian patterns to see if the flags would, would be improvement up there or not, but that's, that is an option to consider.
Yeah, I think my biggest concern is, I think it definitely helps with that now, but you still have, obviously, kids needing to cross the street, and people that are coming all ways to pay attention, that, hey, someone needs to cross the street right now, and, you know, pay attention. So I think that's like my only concern, is, is finding maybe an extra level of security there if we can.
Counselor Kleberg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I supported this project. I think we've proven in this town that the small roundabouts, traffic calming device, if you will, Burl is a speed zone. I know it's posted, but the average speed is far above what the posted speed limit is. And I think it's time that we, we slow the traffic down, and, you know, I, I don't know if there was anything in, in the plan, because I, you know, forgive me, but like down at the Nazarene Church on 8th and, I think it's 17th, where we got the flashing lights? Is that part of this?
No, there's no, there's no additional lighting or, or warnings.
Yep. Some data on the road might be, but, no, I'm, I'm in full support of this.
Counselor Lidkey?
Director Johnson? I have a couple of questions. So I appreciate the ADA ramps and some sidewalks, but if memory serves, a good portion of that not have sidewalks. So what are we going to do to mitigate where our project ends and people with needs beyond?
Yeah. The only sidewalk is on the north side, so there is no sidewalk on the south side. I will say, we continue, and we have been very successful every year to safe routes to school, or, or the equivalent, to, to get, we have sidewalks going in this summer, next summer for Jennifer, and then there's one other. There's a lot of funding available for, for sidewalks connecting schools. This is not included in that. As part of the, at least this year's budget, and, and to cover some of the overages on this, there is money available within public works budgets to, to do sidewalk infill projects for ADA ramps and sidewalk infill. And so we try to utilize that for, for areas like this, but I don't have a, a immediate answer that it, it is not included with this project, but, you know, we will, that is, that is something that we do strive for, is to connect commercial nodes and schools and traffic areas where there's a lot of pedestrians and there is no sidewalk. This one is a little bit, since it does have sidewalk on one side, we typically try to find areas where, it's like, is that 17th or 18th where Jennifer is? Going up the hill, their sidewalk on would be the east side, but Jennifer's on the west side, and there's no sidewalk connecting that. So we try and connect those gaps first. This one, since both Centennial and Boys and Girls are on the north side, there is, there is a direct pathway, but not to say that the kids, kids who live south of, of Burl don't have sidewalk.
Counselor?
On that note, just because I have some concerns as to where this roundabout will be and where the actual school is, are we, is anything in the works to mitigate the speed closer to the school and allow for safe crossing? So is this really the only point for those kids that live on the south side of that street to get across safely? Because in my mind, I feel like, yes, that mitigates some speed issues, but not necessarily where we need them to drive slow, which would be nearer the school. And will that, and I, just studies show that with that, we're going to push more traffic into those other side streets, or back onto Brighton, where we're kind of creating a congestion issue that, right now, we don't have, which I, I get that roundabouts are supposed to mitigate congestion, but having, I'm just trying to piece together, like, are we creating another safety issue or congestion elsewhere in that neighborhood because of people's not understanding or dislike of roundabouts?
I had not considered where that, what, what this does to the surrounding streets as far as pushing traffic, and I probably, given, I don't commute on this daily, what, what, I'm not going to stand here and tell you this, this is where the traffic's going to go, and this is the ramifications. Typically, what we do, you know, say, an example where you would have something like this, and maybe we do, you know, we build it, it does have result, or have impact on the, on the traffic patterns, and we will start, you know, we do our, we do speed studies frequently to try and keep up on, not just speeds, but traffic volumes, to see where they're going. And LPD keeps us in the loop as far as, you know, where they're starting to see, whether it's accidents or speeders, and of course, the public will, will tell us that, you know, I used to saw, see four cars, and now I see 100. And then that's how we, and then we look at, what is that traffic? Are they, are they people dropping kids off? Are they cut-throughs getting to work? What time is it? How, and then we can address, you know, those traffic issues. So I, I'm not going to, you know, give a prognosis before I know what it is, but, you know, that's, I mean, like any, any project, you're, you're going to improve an area, and it's going to have impact, and the dominoes are going to fall somewhere else. I will say typically, and we've worked really well with LPD, that when, if it's speeders in school zones, obviously that is a, it's a big, big issue. And so working with, the, the number one goal is, you know, education and enforcement. So stepping that up, that's the first one, and if you can mitigate that, then you bypass the expensive ones, which is trying to put in traffic calming measures, or trying to keep people from, if it's cut-through, cutting through people's residential neighborhood, that's what we, we don't want to see. And a lot of times, you can cut it off with just a little bit of signage, education, or, or enforcement.
Counselor Spickelmeier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Director, you talked about the roundabout being an aid to pedestrian safety. So is, is that a proven, proven factor? It seems to me that a roundabout, you, you're distracted as you go around. And I've been in other cities and anchorage, we had a lot of them, and they never had a lot of pedestrian, they moved the pedestrian crossings quite a ways away from the roundabouts?
Yeah, I, I, the, the literature out there is that they are safer. I can't tell you that I, I've experienced one way or the other, but the literature is that particularly single-lane roundabouts, for pedestrians, where you don't have multiple lanes, case in point, and I don't like to use it as a case in point, but would be the roundabout down on Southway, you, you have a bypass lane. And so, you know, you've got pedestrians, so you've got an inside lane and an outside lane, and you've got pedestrians who are crossing a bypass lane, an entrance lane, then you got a refuge, then you got a, an exit lane, then you've got a bypass lane. So you've got four lanes of traffic, and those, those bypass lanes are, they, they typically are not looking for traffic. In fact, I will say today, I was in that, and I had a pedestrian. A car was stopped, I was going, and I did not see them, and I stopped for them, but it was, it was a sudden stop. This is not that. This is a single-lane roundabout. So you, when you're in, you are facing, you know, you're going through the circle, and then as you're exiting, you are out of the circle, and then another, I don't know, distance-wise, that's where the, where the, that's where the, the crosswalk is there. So that one in itself is, is safer than, than, like I was saying, the traditional four, four-lane, or the, the four-stop control where somebody's, or like it is now, it's a two, it's stop on 10th, and so, or stop on, yes, stop on 10th. So if you're in Burl, and you're clear, you're looking, and then you're coming across, and then that's where you get all those conflict points. So the literature, I can tell you literature all day about, you know, what the, what the science, or the engineering is behind why they're safety, safer than a traditional intersection, but again, environmental, or the users, I mean, there's so many things that go into it. So I, the last thing I want to say is, yeah, it's safe. Nothing's ever going to happen. And then the lighting isn't quite right, or the users don't, don't use it correctly, or the, the children don't use it correct, I mean, there's so many factors in there that I, we don't have control over, but I can tell you how the design standards have been built up, and why we build them the way we build them.
That's good. Thanks. Counselor Kleberg?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I, you know, Director Johnson, you, you hit on a key point, and, and over the years, I've heard lots of complaints, and Burl has become the Speedway alternative to Brighton. And it is, you know, and Chief Kuzik, you know, Burl's, I mean, I know you guys have set up the little radar, and you can clock it, and keep tallies of the, the rate of speed, but that, that, that's one of the big problems there on Burl. And that's why I support this, is because it's going to slow people And that's why I support this, is because it's going to slow people down. Thirteenth Street years ago, when, well, actually, when the city did Eighteenth, I said Eighteenth Avenue down by the Masonic Temple, and they put in some speed bumps, and then they had a couple little mini roundabouts, and they had one traffic circle down there and stuff like that. And I can't remember the officer's name, but some guy came flying down Thirteenth Street, hit that curb, caught 40 feet of air, and he was mad because he destroyed his suspension. And officer said, well, I guess the last time I saw, you know, you catch that much air, you're going too fast. Well, he was new to the area. So I, I think it slows people down, and, you know, maybe that's what we need to concentrate on, you know, maybe a little bit more enforcement. I mean, I know we're limited, but, you know, enforcement up in the orchards, you know, Brighton's Brighton, I mean, it's, it's just going to be what it is, but a lot of people don't like driving Brighton because people actually do the speed limit, so they get out into Burl, and they can get their, to their job quicker or whatever. But yeah, you've got a school zone there, you've got the Boys and Girls Club there. I'm, I'm totally in support of slowing traffic down on Burl.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Forsman.
Is there another project, if we did decide that this wasn't the project, that we could actually do within, because I know a lot of projects are very expensive, and so could we even do another one that would fit within that price range?
I don't, I don't have one off the top of my head. I mean, identified within the CIP, so projects in the CIP are typically not under half a million dollars. So I, I, the answer is no, but I have plenty of things I could spend money on in the transportation in our, in our roads. So we, we could find a use for it if it was, you know, mill and overlays, or, you know, ADA, you know, bed ramps, we could find a use for it. It's not that we wouldn't utilize the money, but it was in the budget for this, so it wouldn't, it would have to amend the budget, but I, I don't have a capital project.
Mayor.
Counselor.
So also, well, you said that that would be big enough for a trailer to be able to make its way through, it's not going to cause a Burl-type fit for that?
Yeah. It is tight enough to fit within the existing right-of-way, but large enough to accommodate trailers. In fact, we, we ran it by our own street crew to make sure that they, they saw it, and, you know, we run, you know, little, little computer models through it to make sure that you can get a, the school bus through it, or a truck and a boat, or whatever it is, and it meets all the turning radius requirements for, for the, I mean, it, it wouldn't fit well on, on Brighton at the base of the canyon, but, you know, it would function for this road.
Okay. Thanks for answering that. I will say though, I, being that I, I take that road in the mornings every day to drop my son off at school, and I've seen police patrolling the area a lot, so kudos to our police officers that are out there patrolling the area and making sure that we're, you know, staying within speed. So, and I, I'm on there, I'm on maternity leave, so I don't have a lot going on except for driving around, so I'm driving around a lot, and I, I see them quite a bit, and so I'm, I'm impressed with that.
Counselor Littkey.
I just have a question on two line items within the bid tabulation, which would be, the winning bid is number, on number fifteen, Construction Traffic Control, their amount for that is quite a bit more than the other two bids. So I was just trying to identify what that entailed. And then the other one was if you could describe and, or define line nineteen, which is described as mobilization in parentheses, ten percent, because there were some pretty good price differences between the bids.
Yep. Welcome to our world. So it is, it is typically, unless we find that there's something shady going on with the bill, they, the bidders are allowed the flexibility to bid how they see fit, and a lot of bidders, you know, mobilization and traffic control are the two that give them the most flexibility. So if some of these, some of these companies may have their own traffic control division, and they don't have to pay outside resources, and maybe they, some of these smaller companies have to hire somebody, and somebody's not available, so they've got to bring somebody from Spokane or the Tri-Cities or something like that. And the first, and you were asking, oh, traffic control, and then mobilization, yeah. If you're, say, you know, example of Western Construction, they're in Lewiston, they, they can almost see the site where DEPCO is in Orfino and, and the other one from Rathrum. So mobilization, and depending on where your equipment's at, and is it tied up? So there's a lot that goes into it, and a lot of it is, a lot of times, it's none of our business, you run your business how you want to run your business, but it's, we review them, and a lot of times you make sure that there's nothing shady going on there, that they know something about the job that even I don't know, and that, that, those are safe places to put the money, because mobilization is just how, how much money does it take for you to get your crew and your equipment here? You only get it paid once.
And, and traffic control is, while they're performing the job, they're controlling the traffic?
Yep, yep.
That's what I was trying to figure out, was, was Western coming in and going to, like, soup up our traffic control? I was trying to determine what, what, what component that was, so that makes more sense.
Just flaggers and signs and everything that was required, not, not the signs that you're seeing on the screen here, and those are, that's something else.
And Director, I'm going to throw in line twenty-four on that, too, Construction Surveying, because I had those two highlight it, with traffic control, we were, winning bid was ten times as much as we estimated, and then on surveying, you know, seven times as high. And those are pretty significant differences, and I'm starting to have questions about when we put projects out, not to question the, the work of the engineers, but those are significant.
Yeah.
And those don't seem, I can understand mobilization, because equipment's everywhere, but surveying, we have surveyors here, you know, traffic control, there's traffic control in the area, and these seem to be big discrepancies between these two.
Yeah. I, I don't, I, I don't have an answer, and, and I know, I, I myself did not go through these bid tabs, line item by line item, I know that those things that we're identifying and calling out, the big spread is, is pretty, pretty typical. Having worked a little construction in my life, I know, you know, a lot of times they'll, they'll get a quote from an engineer and then double it, because they know they're going to have them come back out, or triple it, or whatever it is, knowing that surveyor, surveyors or engineers will come out and stake a job, and they'll, you know, I'll quote you once, but, and that's in my bid, but to, you know, even come out and maybe do it twice, but if you're going to keep knocking out the pins, I'm not going to keep coming out and doing this for free. And so some of these guys may work some of that into their bid, just knowing how they're going to do the project, I don't, I don't know. But yeah, it's, you, you see a lot of those spreads. Where we get, starting to really scrutinize, is when you see some of these quantities, unit quantity, you know, you know, asphalt, or concrete, or base course, and you see these massive spreads, because you're bidding on the same volume, but what do you know that nobody else knows? And, and, and that's where we start scrutinizing it. You know, they, they know where they can, they can tuck that money away, and, and a lot of these are, you're only paying them once, and so you get one item for, for mobilization, you get one item for traffic control and, and surveying, and so they can't come back and go, you know, and say, well, your, your quantities were wrong, so I'm going to overcharge you, and I jacked up my price. So things like that, that's what we look for, that's a little bit more, more detail that you probably were interested in, but.
Thank you, Director. Counselors, any last minute questions?
Mayor.
Counselor Tousley.
Yeah, thank you. So the literature says that roundabouts do make an intersection safer, that's what the literature says. Our schools have flashing lights to reduce traffic to 20 miles per hour during, when kids are out, right?
Yep.
And we have two entities on that street where there's a lot of children there during school and then after school. We've seen tragic results in the community of pedestrian accidents and deaths. I think this is a small price to pay for what I would say would, would make this a safer street and a safer intersection, for sure. So I support this.
Counselor Littkey.
As one final, just, and because of that neighborhood being a lot of schoolchildren, during construction, what will be their path to school?
I am not sure. I, I have not looked at the traffic control plan, but there will be detours, and I'm not sure how this one will be constructed, that, I will plead ignorance on that. Other than there will be detours.
Counselors, the item is before you. Schroeder.
Make a motion to approve RFP-23-007 to Western Construction of Lewiston, Inc., and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between the City of Lewiston and Western Construction of Lewiston, Inc.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Tousley, to award RFP-23-007 to Western Construction of Lewiston, incorporate it and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement between the City of Lewiston and Western Construction of Lewiston, Inc. Is there further discussion? Clerk Craven-Crawt.
Counselor President Littkey.
Aye.
Counselor Tousley.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleber.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, counselors. Thank you, Director. Next up, counselors, item I, ordinances, first, second, and third readings. Item 1A, ordinance 4874, authorizing providing for the issuance of a sewer revenue bond, Series 2023, in a principal amount not to exceed $29,181,000, for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, installation of improvements to the sanitary sewer system of the City of Lewiston. Describing the bond, providing for the collection and disposition of revenues, providing for the payment of the principal of and interest on the bond, establishing funds and accounts, providing covenants relating to the bond, providing for the sale of the bond to the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, and providing for related matters. This is next item. Director Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dustin Johnson, Public Works Director. One more time, in front of you tonight is, as the mayor described, essentially, what we're doing here tonight is taking all three readings, formal action to call the loan closed for the wastewater treatment plant. This project, as we said, is just slightly north of $29 million. As we, I guess I'll give you a little background. This project was, has been under construction for, I think, three years now, and we got up against the fall, so this would be last October. If you remember, that was the coldest part of the year, and so all the asphalt batch plants had to close. And so we were not able to technically close this project out. There's still some, some paving, and then some landscaping, irrigation, things like that, that isn't necessarily part of the operation of the treatment plant. So, but as written and as agreed to with the DEQ on this state revolving fund loan, we couldn't close this loan out. And so I'm kind of wanting to recognize the efforts between the mayor and our engineer, Joe Kaufman, to reach out and work with the DEQ, and basically, this is a process that they're not familiar with. So instead of us, we're paying interest daily on just having that, that $29 million balance without paying down any principal. And so by working with the DEQ and letting them know, we, we, the plant will not change at all, it's just the, the wallpaper, you know, in, in the guest room that isn't done, we just, we let us close it out. And so it took, it took some conversations, it took some phone calls, and, and that's why we're here tonight, is we've, we've got an agreeance with the, the DEQ to let us kind of separate that last little bit, we're, we're good for it, we've got the funds available within the wastewater fund to, to, to finish, to finish, finish the project, but to close out this loan. And so by taking this action tonight, that is now what we will be paying debt service for at, at 1.2605% screaming deal interest, and, and we can start moving forward in, on our next wastewater project. So you don't want an engineer to talk to you about finances, but I will be here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director. Counselors? Counselor Littkey.
Can I borrow your motion language?
What do you need?
Your motion language.
Oh, sorry.
I would move to combine the first, second, and third readings and waive one reading in full of ordinance number 4874.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Littkey, seconded by Counselor Kleber, to combine the first, second, and third readings and waive one reading in full of ordinance number 4874. Is there discussion? Bearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Your motion?
Counselor Littkey.
I'd move to approve the first, second, and third readings of ordinance number 4874.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Littkey, seconded by Counselor Schroeder, to approve first, second, and third readings of ordinance number 4874. Is there any discussion or amendments? Bearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Clerk Craven-Crawt.
Approving the first, second, and third readings of ordinance 4874. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston, Nespuris County, Idaho, authorizing and providing for the issuance of a sewer revenue bond, Series 2023, in a principal, principal amount not to exceed $29,181,000, for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, and installation of improvements to the sanitary sewer system of the City of Lewiston. Describing the bond, providing for the collection and disposition of revenues, providing for the payment of the principal of and interest on the bond, establishing funds and accounts, providing covenants related to the bond, providing for the sale of the bond to the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, providing for related matters, and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Counselors, next up, we have item I, two, A, ordinance number 4870, second, third readings, repealing and reserving Section 8 and 9 of the Lewiston City Code regarding animal cruelty, amending Section 8-11 to remove unnecessary definitions, amending Section 8-33 to remove provisions regarding cruelty of dogs, and amending Section 8-43B to remove a reference to Section 8-9. This is an action item. Counselor Kleber.
Make a motion to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4870.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Kleber, seconded by Counselor Schroeder, to combine the second and third readings and waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4870. Is there discussion? Bearing none, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Counselor Kleber.
I'd make another motion to approve the second and third readings of ordinance 4870.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Kleber, seconded by Counselor Forsman, to approve the second and third readings of ordinance number 4870. Is there discussion? Amendments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Clerk Craven-Crawt.
An ordinance of the City of Lewiston repealing and reserving Section 8-9 of the Lewiston City Code regarding animal cruelty, amending Section 8-11 to remove unnecessary definitions, amending Section 8-33 to remove provisions regarding cruelty of dogs, amending Section 8-43B to remove a reference to Section 8-9, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, counselors. We are under the active agenda, Roman numeral I, number three, or I guess, alpha number I, three, adoption and approval of ordinance summaries, three A, ordinance 4870, and ordinance 4874, item B. Counselor Schroeder.
Thank you. I make a motion to adopt ordinance, ordinance numbers 4870 and 4874, and approve the related ordinance summaries.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, seconded by Counselor Forsman, to adopt ordinance numbers 4870 and 4874, and approve the related ordinance summaries. Is there discussion? Clerk Craven-Crawt.
Counselor President Littkey.
Aye.
Counselor Tousley.
Aye.
Counselor Forsman.
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder.
Aye.
Counselor Kleber.
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, counselors. Next up, we have Roman numeral seven, unfinished and new business. Item A, City Councilor comments, comments-
and new business. Item A, City Councilor comments. Comments should not be related to an item currently for the City Council or an item that may come before the City Council in the foreseeable future and shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Counselors? Counselor Kleberg?
A brief one. Kind of humorous, but my name tag on the plaque says Jim Kleberg, but according to Tribune, it's Jom Kleberg. That was in Saturday's paper. So I don't know, Carrie, if you can, you know, make that change or not, but.
I'm Bob.
That's all I got.
Other counselor comments? Counselor Tousley?
I had the, I had the honor of traveling outside of the city and I traveled to Michigan for a few days to visit my, my mother-in-law and it's bleak in the wintertime in Michigan. I saw three, three hours of sunshine in about six days. And then I went to Arizona where all I saw was sunshine for six days. And it's really nice to be home where there's a variety of weather. And if you don't like it right now, just give it a few minutes, right? It's good to be home.
Counselor Forsman?
I had to use my phone for my, to look at my paperwork, so I promise I wasn't texting or going in. I was just trying to look at the little tiny writing. My iPad was not cooperating with me, so. Just wanted to make sure people realize that.
Comments? Okay. Mayor, comments? I don't have anything to say tonight, except I would like to recognize someone in our audience tonight. Pierre is here from Pakistan. If you'd wave. Thank you. And Pierre is here in the same program. Remember, earlier this year, we had some students from Pakistan here, Mohatza, and I don't remember the second person's name, but Pierre's here doing the same program. He stopped by City Hall to visit with me today. And Pierre, this is your raft guy right here. Raise your hand, Jim. So, yeah.
I'll take a rafting.
Pierre asked me about rafting. I said, I know somebody who's got one. So there he is. There's your man. And so anyway, welcome to, to our meeting tonight. Advisory Board and Commission appointments, action item number one, Historic Preservation Commission, considering appointment of Kaylee Philippi. Is Kaylee here tonight?
Yes, she is.
She here. Kaylee, would you please stand up, please, and just let us, yeah, just see who you are and just, if you'd stay standing.
Stare at you.
Yeah, yeah, good. I thought maybe that was you and now I'm going to pull something up. So just one second, please. I'm not going to read it all, but Kaylee is very interested in serving the City of Lewiston. I highlighted just a couple of things from her application. She's a freshman at LC State, has some employee, employer, Fred Meyer, but that had to have been down in Boise, not up here, you know, okay. But she's on the Solid Waste Advisory Commission for the City of Meridian for one year, served as the youth commissioner and represent the youth of Meridian on SWAC. She volunteered for Ada County elections as a poll worker every municipal, general, and local election. She's very involved in her communities. And the strengths that she brings to this position, I really enjoyed this. And Kaylee stopped by to visit with me one day. We had a great conversation. She said her strengths, "A young person, student, outlook and input on change in the city." So we'd need these fresh, new ideas. And we're especially excited that you're willing to serve here in Lewiston. Courtesy and respect when deliberating topics, keeping the best interests of Lewiston residents in mind." So thank you, Kaylee, for being here. And in just a second here, I'm going to make a motion to approve you to our group. But thank you for being here. I just wanted to call you out tonight. So I move to appoint Kaylee Philippi to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, second by Counselor Schroeder, to appoint Kaylee to the Historic Preservation Commission. Is there discussion?
Counselors?
Comment?
Counselor Forsman?
Thank you for wanting to get involved. We need that and from people and so it's a pleasure to see that you're getting involved and excited to see what you bring to the table.
Thank you, counselor. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Kaylee. Thank you for being here tonight. Next up, we have item D2, Planning and Zoning Commission, considering the appointment of Maureen Anderson. Maureen has an application in here. Just real briefly, a couple of her comments, her responses to it. She says that, she says, "We live in an amazing community. Most of its citizens want to see us maintain a solid balance of growth and quality of life. She has a strong background of community involvement, both with the City of Lewiston as a member of the LC Sunshine Rotary and with her previous communities. She considers herself to be not only analytical in her abilities to decipher and apply information, but compassionate towards those whom her decisions may affect." And that's an important word in today's environment, compassion. "I strongly believe that taking a balanced approach is what allows me the ability to communicate effectively with the people I interact with. I would like to be able to bring that balanced approach to the commission." So with that, counselors, I would move to appoint Maureen Anderson to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, second by Counselor Littkey, to appoint Maureen Anderson to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Another unanimous vote. Maureen, thank you for your willingness to serve.
Counselors, item 70, agenda topics? Counselor Littkey?
As we approach the budget season, I'm appreciative that Director Barker is going to be bringing us a facilities report to look at deferred maintenance. I would also like for us to look at the city's building and land assets as we prepare to attack some of that deferred maintenance and some other projects as they come up. I think that would be a good learning environment for us to know what we have available to us, what we're not using, what we need to be using, et cetera, as we make some very big decisions for the taxpayers of Lewiston.
Thank you, counselor. Clerk Craven-Crawt, were you able to capture that?
Yes.
Thank you. Hey, counselors, we are now to Roman numeral eight, adjournment.
So moved.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Tousley to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.